The range of products that was available for us. And about three and a half years ago, it's fair to say that there wasn't many products to choose from. Engagement HQ quickly floated to the surface and it was the product that we wanted to use. And there was two main reasons for this. One was essentially the fact that it offered pre and post moderation. So it removed a huge resourcing implication that we would have in that organisation if we wanted to do something like that. But also it reduced risk and concerns that some of our managers had. But the second reason we chose Engagement HQ is that the organisation, Bank the Table, have a really good, solid understanding and commitment to meaningful and robust engagement. Not just online, but how online and traditional tools are actually integrated together. And it's fair to say that our story, like everyone else listening in, was quite tough to start with because initially we had quite a lot of resistance from our senior managers and specifically from our manager in the marketing and digital team. They were really concerned about internal ownership, accountability, and how we're going to manage the site on an ongoing basis. And I guess it's fair to say that they didn't really understand the benefits that online engagement could bring. And I had to be quite proactive in educating them about how online engagement tools supported our traditional tools and that it didn't replace them. It wasn't going to be the silver bullet that would fix everything, but it would hopefully bring in new voices and increase our transparency and our openness and our accessibility. So we had to keep quite strong and quite stubborn and we had to keep discussing and educating the organisation about it. I presented case studies that other councils and organisations were using at some of their successes. And really this was trying to remove that perceived risk that they saw rather than opportunity that online engagement presented itself. And it's fair to say that in the end, our manager of marketing and digital straight out said no. And they're the guys that actually look after our council website. So with support from my manager, we went ahead and did it anyway. And we called it a six-month pilot and that's how we kicked things off. And I suppose the lesson here is around you need to educate and try and help others understand the benefits. But also sometimes you just need to dive in and give it a go. What that meant however is that the engagement team had complete ownership and responsibility for the site, both how it gets built, how it gets used and monitored, and then also how we close and conduct our engagements as well. And that did have a resource implication for our team. So how did we all get started? So the next stage once we'd selected our product and we're going to run for a trial was actually to look at branding. And it would be quite narrow-minded for us just to look at our online branding. So we looked at community engagement and a brand for all of the activities we did, both online and offline. Previously, we'd been developing a look and a feel for each of our individual projects on a case-by-case study. And we're finding that it was getting held up in the marketing comms team for about three or four weeks. So by developing templates and a single brand that sat across all our engagement projects means actually that we've sped up the timeframes that people can undertake their activities. And we wanted our engagement brand to be more than just a look and a feel. We wanted to be a call to action. So Yorsay Adelaide was born, is what we named our website, is how we've branded our Engagement HQ website. But it's also how we brand a lot of our material, both internally, externally. So people, as soon as they see our little bubble with the logo in it, know immediately that they can get involved and they can influence the decision. I guess at the end of the day, for, sorry, for people that don't have big teams, it's important to know that when I first started, it was just myself and the team. And whilst I couldn't rely on other people, slowly over time, Sheila came on board and joined us and then Fred did as well. And I think there's quite a recognition now of what the benefit our online engagement brings and also we need to resource it adequately. To kick things off though, quite often we see councils and other organisations using quite a controversial project to get started. Our approach was slightly different. We didn't start with any major marketing to get the site live and up and running. We essentially just started with our first project and have been building our online community project after project on an ongoing basis. And recently, to get more registered users, we have been quite proactive in targeting key groups to get on board. But ours was a sort of a slowly build and see how it goes. In regards to management buying, it's something that we hear a lot of people struggle with and find quite difficult. And we did too here at ACC. There was a lot of misinformed and uneducated managers and staff about, in particular, social media and concerns around what it actually was. They didn't really know. It was quite unfamiliar territory. So I had to do a lot of running around and talking and educating with people. This included presenting case studies, going to team meetings, having one-to-ones with elected members. So we could start to demystify and start to show some of the opportunities that online engagement could present. In regards to, once we kicked things off, we started to develop a reporting system back to our managers and to our council. So every month, we could report back on how many users were on our site, what projects have been conducted, what were some of the benefits. And Fred, if I can see if you can pull up our first document. So we've now moved to a three-monthly reporting process, that's PDF. It's a three-monthly process that we do. It gets sent out to all senior managers and to our elected members. And essentially what we're trying to show is how we're building our online community. We talk about some of the stats and the figures and we've got that real qualitative, sorry, quantitative data. But recently, we've been starting to add a bit of a snapshot and a case study in. So we're starting to show how online is being embedded, but also some of the value that it brings back to our projects. And in particular, you know, if I chose a subject like cycling, we know a lot of our cycling community are online. So therefore, social media and online engagement is a great way to get their feedback to what we do. I think that's really all I've got at this stage. But I just wanted to share with everyone that it is a long journey. It's a journey of education and awareness, both internally and externally, and it takes time. So hang tough, get in and talk to the right people. Make sure you get supporters of online engagement on board in your team working through it. Start slowly and build up from there and hopefully you too will get similar results that we've had. So Tracy, I'll hand back to you now to see if there's a question that you'd like us to answer.
So I was kicked out of the session as an organiser and I don't see any questions in the chat. So it might be that I can't see any questions, but if anyone has any, can you put them in the chat? And, or even just say hello so I can see whether anything's happening? The joys of technology.
Maybe Tracy, I can, I can start with a question that I just had.
Oh, perfect, Jo.
Listening to them. You were saying that initially it was especially the marketing and the digital team that kind of presented some barriers. How's your relationship to them now?
Yeah, it's a really good question. We have a good relationship with them and I think over time, we've been able to demonstrate the benefit. What was important, that we still actually worked and listened to the requirements and the concerns that they had. So we had to work with them to actually embed Engagement HQ, I think you guys call it deep branding, into our council site. Because what we agreed is that we wanted our customer to have a seamless experience. So rather than going to the council site, clicking on and then going across to the Yorsay Adelaide site as a separate pop-up or window, we've actually built it into the council site. Now that we've got the evidence and we've demonstrated the ways that we can use that new tool and also the registered users, they're quite supportive of the project. And we go to them sort of for technical advice and also advice around how we move forward with the panel. And Fred's going to talk to you a little bit more about some of the ideas we've got for the future.
Fantastic. Dan, I don't see any questions coming in from the crowd, but I wanted.
Tracy, that, just if you scroll up in the, in the question box, they, for some reason, pop up at the top, not at the bottom.
Yeah, no. You'll have to do the questions, Jo, if there's any there, could you?
Should I do some?
Yes, please.
Okay, so firstly, Jody was just asking if you could quickly show that second page of the activity report again. And there's also a question if a copy of the report can be sent around or if that's something that's too confidential.
No, it's not confidential. Look, we're really happy to share. So we'll make sure that Tracy gets a copy of all our documents and we can wrap them up and send them back in what we go.
Okay, great. There's a couple of questions around the perceived barrier of people having to register on the site. What do you think about that? Do you think that unverified participation is a good option? Or do you prefer your participants to register before, you know, making comments and taking surveys?
Yeah, great question. It's something that we've really debated and struggled with for some time. I guess initially, we wanted to make sure that it was left quite open for everyone. So unregistered users was great and we started to build up our numbers that were responding. We've started to reach kind of a critical mass point where I think now it's not so much about the numbers, but it's about understanding who those people are and providing feedback. So we're really moving towards more registered users and actually understanding, you know, where they are and what kind of cohort demographics they fit into, to make sure that we are then hearing from, you know, a wide range of people rather than just a large number of people. And Fred might talk to you a little bit more about it in his segment. But one of the things we are looking up to is to try to make that registration and signup process a bit more fun and interactive. So hopefully that will encourage more people to come on board.
Great. Maybe one more question from Claire. She was asking if a separate brand is critical for online engagement? Do you think that a separate brand is critical?
For our particular scenario at Adelaide Council, I would say yes. What was happening is our community have got many interests. And we might send them out information that might have a particular look and feel saying, you know, "Give your feedback on this new strategic plan or this new management plan." And then there could be a consultation running, you know, at the same time from a different department. Might be, you know, "Give us feedback on this playground." And if they don't look the same, people don't understand that either they might be, you know, from the same organisation or the same opportunity to have their say. So we wanted something that was going to be consistent throughout council. It helped us to streamline our internal processes, but it sends a very clear message out to our community that when you see the Yorsay brand, it's an opportunity to get involved and influence something. And then that brand can, I wouldn't say the brand is changed, but you know, slightly colour modifications, but the material that then sits behind it is specific to each project. We've also found that internally, having that branding on some of our documents that go out actually help our staff with their thinking and how they write their background information, you know, and project details to help inform their engagement.
Okay, great. That's awesome. Thanks.
Dan.
Shall we maybe move on to?
I have a quick question that relates to the brand. How much of the work do you do in terms of traditional PR and media in brand awareness for your engagement? As well as driving sort of traffic to your site?
Could you just ask that again? Sorry, Tracy?
How much traditional PR and media do you use? I mean, is that a focus in terms of the marketing of this brand and the Yorsay Adelaide initiatives?
Yeah, I think it's a combination of both. So we quite often talk about the integration and choosing both online and offline tools to engage. We also use traditional and online tools to promote out. So quite often, a lot of the projects that we do would have a poster that goes up in our libraries and our community centres. It might get sent out to key stakeholders. There could be things like postcards that are branded, advertisements in newspaper that are branded, once again, that might be from a legislative perspective. Or if we're sending a letter out or a hard copy consultation pack to someone who we know wants to get involved, it would be branded Yorsay Adelaide. Then in regards to online, if we want to use that as a promotional tool, we might send out tweets that might have a hashtag in it. We might do direct mail outs, but we do then go back to our registered users on Yorsay Adelaide and remind them that there's an opportunity to have their say. So I think, you know, as an overview, I think it's sort of 50/50. But it depends on who your target audience is and we try to select the tools, both communication engagement, that are relevant for that audience to get the best outcome.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right, we might move on to Sheila. I think we're actually running to time, so keep on moving.
Okay, hi, everyone. I sort of, I'm going to talk a bit about more the operational type of things that we're doing at Adelaide City Council. So essentially, engagement at Adelaide City Council is everyone's responsibility and it's acknowledged as such. And so we have a small session in the induction process when people join Adelaide City Council that we can, that we talk about our engagement process. We go through our principles, of which we have seven, and talk to people about the engagement strategy that we have. But we also have trained over 100 people across the organisation now. And, and what we've done in there is we've looked at, once again, the principles of engagement. We've looked at the important aspects of planning, planning your engagement. We have a three-stage plan-do-report process. So we focus on the planning in the engagement process because planning, I believe, is about 80% of the task. And if you've got a really well-planned project, then you can in fact say that you've got, you're halfway there or you're more than halfway there. So we focus on planning and we have, can I show the project engagement strategy template, please, Fred? We have an engagement strategy template, which is this one. It's branded as Adelaide City Council because we needed it to just slot into the project planning approach. So we have a project format at Adelaide City Council. And to get that slotted in, it was easier to have the branding that we've got there for Adelaide City Council. And as you see, we've got a little bit of how you can use it, so project name, all that sort of information. Some of the important things for me is the purpose of the engagement and also then further down the objectives. My favourite part is what is negotiable and what is not negotiable because that is really important. If it's not negotiable, why would we be asking people to actually comment on it? So we have our objectives, as you can see, and various other sorts of things within this planning document. But importantly, further down, not only do we have the risks, but we have the level of engagement as well. So people can actually look at all of those and choose exactly or negotiate exactly which level of engagement we're going for. Further to that, then we have, further down, we have tools that people can actually decide, "Yes, I'm going to use the Yorsay Adelaide site, yes, I'm going to use the advertisement, or I'm going to have a workshop," there it is, you can see it now. So is there going to be a telephone survey? And sometimes we do have different stages in projects where we go out and inform and perhaps do some early engagement. We've got one example of DPA that we had here and the community were quite angry about it. So when we were asked to do a residential DPA, we actually went out for early engagement and were completely open and honest with the community. And they've actually been very responsive to that sort of approach. So having it in stages means that we've got perhaps informal early engagement, then involve, and then we'll go out with a DPA and consult on it at some particular time. So our planning documents have proved to be really, really successful. People now are tending to go and find the documents before they actually come and see us, which is quite exciting. So then we've actually got something really nitty-gritty to talk about. So once we've done this as well, then people are really clear that they can go to media and marketing and know exactly what they're looking for. Are they looking for signs or whatever? And what sort of media releases they'll be needing through this process as well. So branding is really important for us. And going beyond this, I think you might have just seen the previous flyer. Daniel talked about branding, it's on a PDF. No, PDF. So our branding has many, many sorts of uses. This is a, as you can see, let's talk about your street. This street meeting will go ahead next week and we've letted box the whole street to say, "Come and have a chat about it." We've been out to engage them, we've got some ideas, so we're going to go back and say, "What do you think?" So that's one way that we've used the branding. We've also used it in, as Dan said, before, posters and a variety of other things. But one document that I really like to see is the consultation pack. So if we can go back to that, Fred. This branding is, is really, really helpful. And if you slowly scroll through, Fred, you can see that this document actually, for me, makes it really easy for staff to actually work out what sort of information we can actually do for people, give people. So we look at the purpose, we look at the background, we look at the benefits, we look at the impacts. Well, are there going to be any? We look at how people can provide their feedback importantly, we ask frequently asked questions. And, and down below that, we also have a little bit more information about how, what happens to my feedback. And then further on, it's about, will I, how do I know my feedback has been received? All the questions that people really want to know. But further to that, down below, we have feedback form, which is just a template. People can insert their questions and we also have a submission form. Now, people can cut and paste, delete, add, subtract to this particular document. But what is so fabulous about it is once they've actually completed this, we build a Yorsay website or their particular page based on this particular document. And what that means is we're getting a consistent message that is going out online and also in hard copy. And so we've got that transparency, that openness and honesty, I guess, about what we're actually looking for and asking for. These hard copy documents go in all the community libraries and all the community centres, particularly in our new library that we have, which is fabulous. And people can access this information in many, many different ways. So that's been a really successful document, I think, that we've developed. Engagement champions, if we move, we can take that one down. But we have a programme here of engagement champions. And what we've asked people to do is actually, managers can nominate an engagement champion for their area. And just quickly, their role is essentially to promote the engagement process, promote any exciting training opportunities we have. Also to support their, their team in any engagement process that they need to go through. And I think importantly, to develop a relationship with us as well. So that should they feel that they're a little bit out of their depth, they can come to us and ask us about how we can actually support them through this whole process. So they're really quite critical for us and we actually train them quite often and give them their particular focus. Most recently, we actually had them all in the training room here. We actually went through the Yorsay Adelaide site. We set up a dummy site, we got them to use just about every tool we could. That's not what you do in an engagement process, I can tell you. But for the champions, they learned about all of the tools on the Yorsay Adelaide and, and it was important for them to do so. So then they can help recommend and they know exactly how, how things work on the website. Because it has become increasingly important as a tool for getting information out. Oh, no, we actually also have people on, on projects and we give them project status on the Yorsay Adelaide website. And we don't do this necessarily lightly, but what we do do is support them through that process, train them. And the reason we do this is because essentially, the people running the project and the engagement actually know more about the project than we do. So it makes a lot of sense for them to be actually looking at the discussion forums or the Q and A. And recently, we had a U Park consultation. One of the councillors thought that a short-term parking for residents and visitors to the city would mean a greater turnover and increase spending in the city. So we trialled it and we put out a discussion forum. And we actually gave project status to the person who was running that. And it was incredibly successful. He could actually then comment on the questions and different discussion points that were up. And he could do it within 24 hours mostly. So it was really quite a good responsive approach. We also had the new city library and we have question and answer. And once again, the new city library, people know that library better than we do. So it makes sense for them to understand and take over. So essentially, that's a lot of the operational stuff that we're actually doing here in Adelaide City Council. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheila. I might just go to Jo to see if there's any questions from the panel or from the participants, sorry.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Sheila. There are plenty of questions coming in. I'm just going to pick a few that maybe haven't been answered yet by you, Sheila, anyway. There's one question about resistance from the other areas of council to completing those templates you have just shown. Was there a bit of resistance? Do you find it hard for them to actually go through the process that you have set up?
At the beginning, we certainly did. And one particular person, he used to just smile at me and essentially, it took me quite a while to sit him down and actually go through it with him. And so the process was, I would sit with people or Dan or Fred would sit with people to complete it. And it's just taken a bit of time where people actually understand that it's actually easier to think it through. And it's been, I've been here two years now, so it's taken that time. I guess also importantly, we've actually involved the media and marketing people into this approach as well. And I've been in a meeting where I've just been about to say, "So have you completed your engagement strategy?" And the media and marketing people have said it for me. So I know that when I'm not in a meeting, people are actually asking for it anyway. So it's just been a long, slow process. You know, start with one or two people, move along and then, now we're at the stage, we won't actually deal with a project unless people have completed it. So two years on, we've got to the stage where you have to have one or we're not dealing with you. So, you know, it's a bit hard at the end, but people have understood, I think, the importance now of actually completing it.
Well, that's great. That's where you really want to end up, I guess. That question came from Anna, by the way. There's another good question from Internet. She's asking if online feedback, how it has been, has it been as influential as other more formal submissions? Maybe from the offline space?
Absolutely. And what we do is we, obviously, we get the responses and send them to the relevant project officer. And these days, we're actually running an evaluation and we actually go and ask people to evaluate. And what we ask them to do is to identify the number of hard copies. We also ask them to identify the number of online receipts of responses and include them all. And they include all of those in the reporting process. So yes, they are considered by council and they are considered, as far as I understand, to be of equal value.
Okay, great. Maybe one more question from Prue. She was asking, you have already touched on that earlier. So you give certain project managers access to their own project online? How do you decide who gets access?
Well, we look at their expertise, but they're never really alone. So almost anybody could actually have it. And it depends on, in our two cases, we had quite high-level people actually answering these questions and working on the projects. But we never leave them alone either. We support them through it and help them with that sort of approach. Dan, you might like to say something?
Yeah, look, I think that's absolutely true. And we kind of, sometimes they'll ask for their, for our help. So they're like, you know, "I can give it a go, but I'm not sure." So our role is really as that facilitator and the enabler to support them to do it. If we had someone, let's say, who's not very good at communication or writing in plain English, we would say to them, "We'll work alongside of you to run a Q and A as opposed to handing it over." But once you've built their capability, you find that they'll want to come back in and do more. And the next time it's like, "Oh, you've already done that before, so off you go, you can do it again." And we find that, as Sheila mentioned, with writing the engagement strategies or managing their online engagement.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Shall we move on to Fred, maybe and see if we can get answers to some more questions towards the end of our session?
Sounds good.
Hi, everyone. My name is Fred. I'm a community engagement officer here at Adelaide City Council. I've never done a webinar before, so I'm just a little bit nervous, so please bear with me. So today I'll be talking about using Engagement HQ to its full potential and also that our, what we do with our online community, our registered user database. So some of the ways that I use Engagement HQ, I think it's such a great tool and the flexibility that it provides with us is awesome. It has the ability of allowing us to embed rich third-party content. So there's heaps of other online tools out there that you can take fully advantage of to provide your community with a more rich engagement, online engagement experience. One of the ways that I did this was through this awesome tool called ThingLink. So it allows me to embed in the static images that allowed it to be interactive so that I could embed a map of a bike lane project and link documents off that image from a particular location so that the community can access information that relates to them and that impacts them. So just providing more accessible information for the community so that they can provide informed feedback as part of that engagement process. Another tool that we're starting to use is more social media integration as part of our projects. So we did this successfully with Cityscape Park project that we ran over the Christmas period, which we usually don't do, but for that particular audience who are already out there on site, we allowed this one to go through. So we had people on site for that project at the skate park just to get some feedback about future locations for that skate park. So as part of that, we used a Twitter string alongside the project page to capture another type of audience and another type of. to capture another type of audience and another type of feedback that people are providing. As you know, social media is instant and reactive, so it gives another type of feel and indication of what our community is saying out there. So I highly recommend using social media integrations into your projects. So another thing that we've been doing is testing out other different features of Engagement HQ and using those features to its full potentials. So Sheila touched on about the U Park trial with one of our account with $6 for three hours with the discussion forum and giving project management status for that. As part of that project, we did, we used the discussion forum and turned it into a live chat with one of our elected members. So one of our elected members came onto the discussion forum and was there live answering the questions and concerns that a community had associated with that project. So that was a great process to do that as that showed the high-level buy-in from our elected members and they're familiar with using our site. And that also showed the transparency as well that our community know and they appreciated that, that they could speak to a live elected member about the concerns and issues with the associated project. I was just wondering if Dan and Sheila had anything to add to that?
No, I think you've summed it up well. And it was really going, well, we can have an online discussion forum, but let's have a live one. So as you mentioned, we promoted it. We had quite a few people, you know, conversing with us, which was a bit tricky from our end responding quite quickly, but we did it quite well. And it's the first time, we know, there was a lot of people that were participating but not actually asking questions. So they ended up behind the scenes, watching what questions we were getting asked and then also what responses we were getting from the elected members. So for us, you know, trialing and pushing the boundaries and doing new things is a way to keep moving forward, but also showing how we can use the site.
And I'd just like to add that that was a reasonably controversial consultation. And we tried it again on something that wasn't quite as controversial. I mean, there was learning there for the councillor, but essentially we didn't get nearly as many people responding. So if you've got a controversy out there, it's probably a reasonable way to go.
Cool. So another feature that we've been taking advantage of on the Engagement HQ website is the closed consultation page feature. So we've been using that successfully with some projects, especially around where there's really targeted stakeholders that necessarily that that project shouldn't go out to a wider community. So we've been using that to target particular people and setting them up with login. So those people can only access that page for the information and provide feedback. I've also been recently working on one of those pages with their access and inclusion officer. So here at Adelaide City Council, we have a panel of community members and peak bodies for people with disability called the Access and Inclusion Panel. So I've been working with Sarah to set up a closed consultation community panel for that group of people so that we can have a way they can provide feedback and access information as previously they've been corresponding through email, which wasn't that effective. So I've been working with Sarah to set up the page to provide a private, comfortable space where some of those people with disability can come in and provide feedback on some of the projects we're doing at council on access or the latest information communications associated with that panel, including case study information and document libraries. So everything's there for them to be fully informed and provide feedback on our consultations. I'll also move on to our online registered database. So we treat that database as another aspect of that community. So that's our online community. So we've been providing regularly monthly correspondence with that group about all of our online consultations. And I've taken a bit of a personal touch with that online community registered users, building a rapport, using the email features to its full functionality and being a bit fun and personal in those monthly newsletters that go out to them. So recently, we're looking at changing the way that we do that monthly email because that goes out to everyone on the database about what's coming up. But we want to tailor that to tap into our communities of interest because that online community registered users provided us with the information about what they're most interested in at council. So we really want to touch into those fields and start tailoring our emails to reach people, to tell people about things they're only interested in. So we're moving more towards a community of the interest-based communications, which we're still in the middle of working out. So with the new Engagement HQ platform, the rollover, it's great because you've now got the flexibility of customizing your signup form. So if you're interested in going along those directions, that customization, the signup form allows you to add extra questions. And so you can start to build up your own online communities that venture this space on what people are interested in at council. In the future, we'll be moving towards a more location-based communities of interest as we kind of work out the logistics around what people are interested in, title of place, especially with the placemaking initiatives that council are currently undertaking. So in the future, we'll move towards letting people know about the things that they're interested based in different locations around the city as well. I was just wondering if Dan or Sheila had anything to touch on about that?
No, I think you've made the really good point that we don't just look at them as registered users. We look at them as an active online panel, if you like, where we have regular, ongoing correspondence with them. So we're just looking to see how we manage them, just like maybe a football club might manage their Twitter account with thousands of followers. That's how we're starting to view our USA Adelaide database or registered users. And another way that we've used it, I'm not sure if you're familiar with this, Fred, but we had our safety officer doing a call for volunteers to go and do a late-night walk down Harley Street. So they came to us and said, hey, have you got any volunteers that might want to join us? And we said, well, we don't have registered volunteers, but we do know on our database of the, you know, 2,000 people that have signed up, you know, there's a small proportion of them that are interested in safety and they're interested in, you know, the Harley Street area. So we sent an email just to those 15 people who we narrowed down and said, here's a great opportunity. And of those 15, one of them took it up. So we're actually able to translate an online participant into a traditional tool, which is a late-night safety walk audit down Harley Street. And I think that really shows the potential of all these people that are registered when we know who they are, what they're interested in, and also the locations that they're interested as well. And that way, we won't be spamming them, but we're going to be talking to them about things that are important for them.
Touching on that point, last year, we did an invite to our online community users. So we asked them if they would like to meet up, to come chat with us over a movie night. So we sent out invitations to our online community to invite them to that movie night. Although there wasn't as many people as we thought there were, but it's great that those people still came because they got to meet us in person and we also got to meet them as well. So that's another way that we're using as well to interact and build relationships with our online community. I think that's about it for me.
That was fantastic. Fred, thank you. I'm sure there's a few questions from Joe, which I'll let you pull up.
Yes, indeed. There are a few questions coming from Charlotte, Desley and Prue. They're all kind of asking how you attract new people to the site and to register in the first place. I know you've been running a few kind of public events where you educate your community about how to use your site. Have those been particularly successful in driving more traffic to the site and getting more people to register?
I've been recently working on a project. I've been going through our registered user database and having a look about who's on there at the moment and the different demographics. So one of the clear demographics were, we were messing from that database where young people aged between 15 to 24. So we went with our marketing consultant, went through a couple of scenarios about what's the best way to reach those missing demographics. Is it about doing mass online communications and a whole marketing campaign? But so we didn't go down that route, but the best way that we found was attending youth-oriented activities that were already out there. So one of the first sessions that we went to was the university's O Week, so the orientation week. So we went along to one of those sessions and it was great to be there in face-to-face because in that first couple of hours, we've got 50 young people sign up to the database and that's more than double what we had previously. So I'd say definitely recommend doing those face-to-face interaction activities and tapping into other sessions that are happening in the community and go out there and being on hand and talking to young people to get them to sign up. It's not really worked well for us.
Oh, great. That really also highlights how you guys are using the signup form in order to capture all that information to be then able to later see, okay, how does my database actually look like, what is missing, as you just said, that's really great.
Yeah, definitely. It's very interesting going back and having a look at all the different demographics. We've got one-third who are Adelaide city residents, but because we are a capital city, there's a lot of people who are based out in the suburbs and even people from outside of the greater Adelaide metro region as well, so.
What that means too is that if we do run some kind of project, we can actually split up the online feedback or combine it with that traditional hard copy feedback and say, this is what people who live in the city have to say about a particular project. And then the people who don't live in the city, this is what they have to say. Because sometimes we find that different cohorts have got a different opinion or a different view. So knowing who our customers are that are responding is really important to then sort of unpack and analyze that data in a meaningful way so our councils or our project officers can then make the decision.
There's another question from Todd. He's asking if you're using the site for internal activities at all or internal consultations?
I can perhaps suggest that I've been approached recently by our people and culture section. We're actually moving into an enterprise bargaining process and they're much more confident that we have confidentiality through the USA Adelaide here rather than perhaps using a Survey Monkey or some other tool. So definitely, we are using it as for internal engagement as well, yeah.
Okay, great. One more question here that's asking from Deanna. If we go to the ACC website, will we see all these things we are talking about here? So maybe I can answer the question. If you haven't looked at USA AdelaideCityCouncil.com, you should definitely check it out. It's a beautiful-looking site and the three of them are doing a great job there. So that's definitely something to check out.
I think that's about it. I'm just going to add to that. When they do go down into the projects, in the document library for each project should be the consultation pack. So you'll see Sheila's documents there come to life and then complement the website. And each of the projects, I should say.
Do you have it loaded up, available on your screen there? Just to have a quick, quick look at what you're sort of talking about.
Yeah, definitely.
We've got the time, so let's jump in.
Yeah, we can take you for a quick tour then, if you like.
Taking virtual to a whole new level.
Yeah, so. Can you see our screen, Tracy? I know. You've just got to do one thing.
Yeah, we've got the little title of project documented up still. So one of the things, a couple of things that I really loved hearing and I've taken notes furiously throughout all of this is talking about how planning, the planning that you do is, I mean, Sheila, you said is 80% of the task of all of this. And that's, that's really fantastic to hear that, you know, there is a lot going into before you even start a page, actually looking at the planning and what are the negotiables and all of that. And the other thing that really, a big smile on my face, is really about how you're trying to push the boundaries of the platform and the tools and you aren't afraid to try something new. And if it works, that's great. If it doesn't, you know, it's a lesson learned. So I think those are the big takeouts for me from this. And hopefully, you know, others on the call might be a bit more keen to try some of that out. But yeah, we've got, we've got your screen on, so that's great. We can see it.
Great. So we've got our homepage here and as Fred scrolls down, what we use this for is to show the projects that are currently open and live for feedback and for engagement. And then down the bottom, one of the ways, one of the things we've struggled with is being a capital city, we have a lot of projects and therefore we have a huge archive list, you know, spanning the last three and a half years. We're still looking at new options of how we present this information. But at the moment, what we've found is people are looking and come back to projects that are recently closed because they want a bit of an update of what's happening. So we put that down the bottom under project updates. And then we have a general update section, which is normally projects that are either recently closed or they're in progress or we're waiting for council or community to do something. And then down the bottom, we have an area which is for our final decisions made. And this is really, a project's been closed, consultation feedback's been received, it's been passed on to council or the responsible officer, and a decision's been made. And so we keep that list here as kind of a quick go-to to actually show where each project's at up to. And we're finding it, you know, people find it easy to navigate. We don't have our widget on there at the moment, which is our archived projects because it is too long at the moment we're working towards. So that's one of the features we do, which is, I think, a bit different than other people. But if we scroll up quickly, Fred, and perhaps go to the Residential Street Development Programme project, so people can come in and then click on a project. And the way that we build our sites at a basic level is that we have a general intro blurb, which will pop up in a moment, which is the call to action. So what are we doing? What are we trying to achieve and what do we want you to do? And then we have all the information that supports that project around it. So you'll see over there on the right-hand side, we've got the related documents and there's an expression of interest form. We've got some FAQs, which is mandatory for us for all of our projects. We have key dates with workshops that we've been running. But essentially, this page here has been built from the consultation page or the expression of interest form in this one that Sheila's mentioned. So it's really then around, here's all the background information, here's the tools you can use to engage with us. Yep, it's popping up now. And they can do that in hard copy, they can print it out and write it on it if they want to. If they come to a workshop, they can write it on then and there. But they can do exactly the same thing online through the, you know, survey tool or through the online discussion or whatever tools are selected for each project. And what we find is that we get a lot of traffic, you know, to our homepage and then to the projects. But when someone is really engaged in their project, they'll keep coming back. They're looking for the update, they want to see the report, they want to know when it's going to council and they want to know what the final decision is. And so we try to build a story for each project, which is, you know, here's the background, this is what we did, this is what we heard, and here's our, you know, final decision, demonstrating back to our communities that we are actively listening and we have an engagement that's branded, it's meaningful, it's robust, and, you know, something happens with your feedback. Yeah.
There's one other, one on there where we partner with state government. It just shows a bit of collaboration, if you want to go back, Fred, to the USA. And we just have a bit of information upfront and then we link it straight through to the state government site. So there's a survey on at the moment about corruption. So we just let people know it's on, but lead them directly through to that site. We don't, we don't take carriage of that at all. So it's versatile and it just shows that we're working with our partners as well.
So another example we had was when the state government were running a consultation on the new Adelaide Oval Footbridge. And people were getting confused, thinking that it was run by council. So rather than saying, no, it's not us, we actually said, it's the state government that are running it. And if you'd like to have this, say, visit their website and give feedback to them. So we made it really clear that we were helping to promote, but the engagement and the decision-making was made by someone else.
Absolutely, yeah. Fantastic. Joe, are there any more questions?
Any other questions you guys have got?
I think Tracy just left us there. There's one more question by Todd. He's asking if you write your own terms of use guidelines or just using the standard ones that are provided by us?
They're looking at me, apparently. No, we haven't, we haven't written any sort of internal standards of use. We really try to take a collaborative approach with our offices that we work with. So as that's been, you know, highlighted already, it really boils down to the planning. When we understand what the project or the purpose is, who we're trying to engage, what we're trying to achieve, what tools we use, then we actually have all the building blocks to run a really successful engagement. Because all the information through that thinking process is used to populate the consultation pack and then also build the website. So, you know, So, you know, the, the building of the pages still comes down to us, but we work collaborative with the officer to do them. Initially, we did have a little handbook that we built or wrote for staff, which was really a kind of a quick snapshot of each of the tools and how they get used and what we needed from them to support them in building the site. But we've found that over time, people's awareness has increased. It's fairly self-explanatory what each of the tools do and we don't need to use that document anymore.
Just maybe on that, there's a question from Prue asking if you have a template on how to report back to the community or back to the council?
Almost.
No, that's a really good question. As part of our overall implementation to embedding engagement in the organization, we've followed our process of plan, do and report. So the last two years has had a really heavy emphasis on planning resources internal to support staff in getting it right and doing all the thinking, you know, that we've talked about, identifying stakeholders, et cetera. The doing part is kind of general project management. We try to leave that to the officers. Because we've seen their planning, we know what tools they're going to do. We do have a toolkit that supports, I mean, running a workshop or hosting a drop-in session or running or facilitating a session. But we leave that up to them. We help them with the thinking and the planning. And the third component is what we're really focusing on this current year. So we've had lots of different reports going back to the community and to council saying, you know, this is what we asked and what we heard and what we're doing. We are trying to streamline that so that A, it's easy for our staff, B, our community get used to have a standard reporting process and they know where to access key information. But thirdly, that the data and the information is reported back to council in the most meaningful way so they can make the best decisions possible. And I think that's been our real driver around, how do we report back so that it actually gets traction at council at that high level, at that decision-making level? So I guess the answer is not yet, but in the future we may have something to share once we finalize those documents.
Okay, great. Tracy, are you back?
I am. I had a garbage truck going past the house as I was talking, so I thought I'd do it myself. Very professional operation. No, I am here. I think we've come to our 11:30 or 12:30 time here, so we might wrap it up there. As, there might be some questions that still haven't been answered. As I mentioned before, Dan and the team are happy to go through those. We'll go through them and see if we can do a sort of a sum-up at the end and we'll email that out to everybody along with this recording. But on behalf of Bang the Table and Engagement HQ, I'd just like to say thank you so much to Dan and his team for taking the time out to share this information with everybody on the call. It's very valuable and I'm sure will help out a lot with other people and what they're trying to do in their online community engagement. So yes, just thanks, thanks from us. And we'll be sending some emails out in the next week or so. And yeah, I think that's a wrap. So thanks, Dan and team. And I'll close.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, and thanks to Joe for picking it up where I left off. And thanks, everyone, for being on the call. Have a, have a good day. Bye.
Bye. Thanks.